Especially with the snow, who knows, maybe Chris is trying to dust off. Given the capacity. All right, I have six o'clock on my phone. Are we ready to begin? Can I? Is there anybody, anyone that wants to wait? Okay, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order then. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from last board meeting?
Yes, but I wasn't here, so I don't feel comfortable offering a motion. Mark second.
Spencer motions, Mark seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Perfect, the minutes pass.
Marvin, your mic's not on.
Oops, yes, thank you, thank you, Mike, reminding me of my mic. Just to reiterate into the mic, Spencer moved to approve the minutes, Mark seconded from last board meeting. I always try desperately to have the board packet virtual, that way I'm not using trees, and my laptop decided to cut out. So that's fine, I'm just gonna be operating off of my phone.
I have extra paper copy if you want.
I don't wanna use paper.
That tree is already dead, already. Yeah, if you wanna use it. Otherwise, it just gets recycled after I even see it looked at. This way you could.
Wow, this is one way to go.
Oh, that's good. Or it gets recycled.
Thank you, Mike, I do have, I do have it on my phone, I was just stalling while I pulled it up, okay. So, first and foremost for discussion, we have the election of the 2025 board members. I've had a chance to talk to everybody, and everyone is okay with just keeping the current officers in place and then reassessing with the, I guess, caveat that we need to start training the treasurer because of course we have some highly esteemed board members that are, have served a very long time and will be greatly missed, and we need to somehow, possibly through osmosis, just absorb all of that historical information, so.
I will move to act in current for the slate of current officers as the slate. Officers.
Greg News, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Joel, Joel second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Yeah.
And that includes Chris's treasurer, right?
Yes.
And that's ten years, okay. You miss a meeting.
Yeah.
She's been doing it for like fifteen.
He has, he has.
And I did talk to him, and he was willing, with the caveat, he's like, you know, we should probably train someone. Yes, and I think we voted to answer the trade, so. I don't know.
It's just like a demotion.
You can think about it however you want. Okay, so 2025 operating budgets, everyone had a chance to look at the budget? I know I spoke with Angela, she did have a clarifying question, and I will tell it to everyone, that way everyone can hear. We went slightly over budget on employee training, so I asked Mike about it, and it sounded like in the past, it just hadn't been as utilized as maybe it should be. So this year, I was highly encouraged to go ahead and attend the trainings and go to the conferences and learn. So that's why we were slightly over budget this year, is because people and our staff took us up on on that opportunity, so. We'll know for next year.
Yeah, so basically, as I outlined before, when we were going over the budget and passing it, we for, and this is standard, this is what DGLF recommends you do, you ask for the most, and then they will come out with actual figures later on after the fact, and so our figures came back less than what we asked for, and they so our proposed budget was 1.826 million operating, and they reduced it by 32,000, so I took that out of, there were a couple line items like maintenance, like the lawn care and stone removal that I kind of bumped off, not knowing what it was gonna be like, I took that out there to reduce that the total operating budget to be down to where we're supposed to be.
Any other questions? Hearing no questions, does that mean someone's willing to make a motion?
I don't think there's a motion for this.
We don't have to approve it?
It's already.
It's already.
Yeah.
That's what I was gonna say, I was gonna say it's kind of like the game to be approving.
Yeah, yeah, you guys approved my post, and then the state just said you have to reduce it by 32,000, so.
Okay, I got it. Fabulous, well done. Beautiful discussion, we're gonna go ahead and move on. The personnel policy, so this is specifically in regards to the paid or the new holiday policy, and whether or not we're gonna have, staff is gonna have a floating holiday for Easter. And this we do need to vote on. And.
The policy changes.
Right.
Okay, I'll make a motion, and then you can discuss. I move that we accept the the paid holidays that are there, including Easter, and that Easter being allowed as a floating holiday. Between staff and. Directional. Direction for supervisors and stuff.
Yeah, based on what I'm seeing. Oops. Well, which not so well.
All right.
Can we open this for discussion?
Yeah.
It's time right now. Okay. I did notice that on the paid holidays, that Easter was listed as one, and on the current personnel policy, which was approved in April of this year, I'm reading from page five of our packet that we got. I did notice on page 10, where this was drawn from in the policy manual, that it specifically states all employees will be paid for four hours for holidays that fall on a Sunday. And that was updated in April of 2024. So, I think that it has already been addressed in the, in the beginning of the year. It must have come up. And so, I think it's already been addressed. And the policy was approved then that we're still looking out for our employees and trying to give them and be fair, and do them, do justice for what they're doing and for their work. And, yeah, you know, I wasn't here then, I started in May, I believe, so it happened just before I was here, but it seems like the board has addressed that and and had the employees' best interest in, at heart. So, with giving them four hours, and that was when we were still open on Sundays, and now we're closed on Sundays except for special events in the, in this room and so forth. So, I think I think it's pretty fair what has already been made into policy.
Looked at the research that Mike did as far as the other libraries in our area, and there's only one that has fewer paid holidays than we. The others are more. If I went through, Garrett's the only one that has, that has fewer than we do, all of the others that are listed here Steben, Noble, Syracuse, Waterloo, Warsaw, et cetera, all of the, and the ones on the other page, all of those have more paid holidays than we do, so, you know, we're sitting, we're sitting in the lower portion of compensation for holidays, and the other thing that I got was that we gave a 5% increase in compensation, and then if we eliminate if we eliminate that floating Easter holiday, we're taking part of that compensation and back, that doesn't, that sends a big message to me, if you're, if you're willing to give a 5% increase and then take four hours of compensation back. That doesn't seem.
Yeah, it seemed to make sense. I think pointed out a reasonable discrepancy.
Not eight hours.
It's not eight hours.
Not eight hours.
Yeah, so there's, there's a couple of things here, like that policy you write does state for holidays that they get a half, probably Sunday they get a half day. So I think the question is, do we continue to pay that half day in Easter, which no one is ever going especially in Easter? Or do we eliminate that stipulation? For Easter specifically, because we can just don't call it an Easter. That makes sense, because, because I think we're a little bit double dipping. We give Easter as a floating holiday, but then also say Easter's a four-hour off day. Because then they can take, say, the Monday after Easter, and then also be paid Sunday. That's under the weight of policy now. If Easter falls on a Sunday, so they're taking their Easter holiday.
So, the way it stands now is, since we were, we were open that technically there would be people that would be, would have been scheduled to have four hours on Sunday. So, instead of giving only paying them the four-hour holiday, because they're the ones that would be losing out. My understanding, Mary, said, okay, everyone, if it's a fall on Sunday, you get paid the four hours, because it's you're not working. And so we have, it was only a four-hour shift. I think that's where that, that comes from, but that would also, you know, include, you know, if if on these other ones, well, I guess technically Christmas.
Yeah. It's all on Sunday, or New Year's would fall on Sunday, and so. So for clarity, I'm all in favor of keeping this as a holiday, I think that time off is important, I think that livable salaries, I think tuition, which needs libraries are give better benefits, and we need to keep, keep in competition. I just wanna make sure the policy reflects that they can't take Monday off and then also get paid.
Yeah, so no one would be paid for that Easter Sunday, they would get that floating holiday. The way, the way it would be, is that get that floating holiday, those hours, when you choose. If we leave it at as is, you pay everyone four hours on Sunday when we're going to be closed anyway. So.
With the floating holiday being four-hour half-day, which would, is what they, which is what we currently have.
That would be up to you, I mean, that would, that would meet with what the current that would mean that no one would lose out anything, if they wanted to pay anything, it'd be a lot.
It's rated, we kept, kept the four hours, we could take four hours holiday pay some other time of the year.
Joel, is that how you were making on that, to try to, since it's already set up that way as opposed to increasing time? Because we were, and you had envisioned, I think, I guess I was reading, I assumed you were envisioning an eight-hour, like, basic.
Originally, yeah, yeah, I was, I was envisioning that.
But you were, you were also not necessarily talking about being paid so much as taking the day off that would have been scheduled, call it a holiday, or how, when you said a floating holiday, how would that actually work?
So, floating holidays are often used for days that we would originally be open. I know ACPL, I think, does, like, Juneteenth, it's a, it's a holiday in in the books, but they're still open, so you can take eight hours any time of the year for that day.
So it's basically like paid time?
Yeah, yeah. They're just don't take time off, it's additional eight hours for, but it's a holiday pay, not part of your.
Yeah, right.
So if we an occasion where we're gonna be renting out this room, where we need staff here on, on a Sunday, those staff members will get paid a full day, or.
The way, it's been four days, not four hours.
Or, if, okay.
On Sundays, it's three days, four hours is the most that we're open, or, or the room.
Okay, but we're not gonna rent this room out on a Sunday, that's also a holiday. Okay, so nobody will be working on that Sunday, that's a holiday. I assume we just wouldn't rent the room out on Easter Sunday. Yeah, exactly.
So the motion on the board? What we've described. I believe I just said that I think we could give the the listed holiday, listed paid holidays, with Easter being referred to the floating holiday. On Sunday.
That was a motion, and then.
And in keeping it that way, is that an eight-hour holiday, or is that a four-hour?
I believe, according to the policy here, it's four hours.
Okay.
It'll be a four hour.
Okay.
It's a four-hour holiday?
Yes. I could take that, you know, that's what.
Which there are a couple of.
Well, and it, again, if it's it's a person who wants to use it for celebration, a Christian celebration of surrounding Easter, that would lend itself to a good Friday. An afternoon offer of a Friday.
Yeah. I think it would also be interesting to see, because we've never had a floating holiday before, the staff's reaction, and just see if it's something that they enjoy, and maybe something that we just observed for 2025, and if there's a high interest in possibly looking at other floating holidays, where staff would be able to move around and celebrate in different ways, I think, I think that would be something that I would at least be willing to entertain if the staff would be interested in that, and if this, if the four hours is successful.
Since we look at the surrounding the surrounding libraries would vary from
Yeah.
12 to 15.
Yeah.
15 days.
Yeah.
Right.
I, I think it's I think this is great. Since it's, oh, but since the days that we're actually, we just have to make sure that all of the staff take holidays on Good Friday after.
Well, which is why the supervisor has.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's.
The boss.
Yes.
Yeah.
Figure out. I'll call the question and ask for a vote.
Are we, okay, Greg has asked for a vote, so all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
All right.
And that's just for the four hours, right?
Yes. Yes. Okay, so next on the list then is the request to reconsider the collection development policy. Does everyone have a chance to look through this? We don't need to collect a vote on this, it was just brought to our attention that there were some items that we could improve on the request for reconsideration policies. So Mike has done, I think, an excellent job collecting some of the strategies of other libraries. And then if we don't need to collect a vote on this, I believe, but it might just be more our consideration, oh, go ahead.
If you wanna change anything.
Right.
Fire a vote.
Yes, that's what.
And I wasn't here for the discussion last month, of course, that's not gonna stop.
Asking questions. We would, we expect nothing less, Greg.
Well, no, and I'm trying to figure out, was, was the concern that we wanted to remove the director from the loop, or was the concern that we wanted to insert a trustee, or some more trustee, what earlier on in the process? Or, and it may have been Angela's concern if it was.
It was, and I did talk to Angela, so I can speak on her behalf, and she, she did say that I could. Her concern was that we wanna create an environment where everyone feels safe and can voice their opinion, and she just posed the question, I wonder if we should have a direct report on a committee like that, because they may not feel empowered to speak their true opinion if their direct supervisor is is there, and it wasn't any slant towards Mike and his position, it's just unfortunate Mike's in charge of everything, so. That was the thing that was brought, brought up.
Correct.
And the question that was posed.
And, and I I'm not sure I have problems with the way the policy is now, I, however, don't have an objection, I, and I guess Mike could explain that maybe we could cover some, if we have a board member representative that wants to be a part of that committee, that we could make it sort of an ex officio spot, and even designate a, a board member to sit in, that might help empower other staff or other folks, because technically being a representative of Mike's boss doing that. I don't necessarily have a problem with that, I don't want a situation where every request for reconsideration comes before the board, correct? That's what was being suggested, I guess I'm opposed to that.
I don't think that that was what was in question, just creating a safe environment.
I think she was just concerned with a supervising, supervising position that the people underneath would not be willing to speak their, speak their minds. However, I understand also that there are a limited number of people who have their degrees, et cetera, and certifications that allow them a little more insight into stuff, so.
And, and just, I'm just throwing this out there, the way that's written, I don't have to be, executive director does not have to be part of it. I just have been. It just says that the executive director can designate to the committee and including librarian charged with material exhibit, so, there's nothing that says that I am supposed to be, I just happen.
I do think, Joel, like, that if we move to if we move to rule of book comments, whether it's removing from the shelf section, at the end of the day, you're the executive. That's a big, that's a big, that's a big.
Yeah, I don't wanna micromanage.
And, and.
Same spot on.
Yeah, and, and I think that you, whether it's directly a part of that committee, or as an overseer of that many results, I think you have to be able to be, and I think, I did, I did notice that it's a little vague that they can appeal, at least in this thing, that they can appeal to the board. And maybe I'm misunderstanding what the policy is, but.
Well, we've always been informed, whenever there's one.
Always been informed, but I think I'm convinced that the the file group will be, question reconsidered, they didn't like the answer, they can bring it in front of us, and that's
If the committee does not reach a solution.
Right.
The clause that.
The clause doesn't actually give them the right, unless there's a statement effect. Which is not actually how I had.
I thought that we had interpreted it last month that there was the option for the person who filed the complaint against the book that if, if they did not like the committees, the reconsideration committee's answer, that they could appeal to the Board of Directors.
That was my question.
Okay, so now, this is not the way to read.
And it's not the way it reads.
Yeah, that's it, it's only, I'm sure mine aren't reading.
Okay, here's the way, here's the way it reads, and.
Because, yes, Joel, that's how I interpret it to you, that if there's any question, and they don't like it, they can then bring it before the board as a decision-making body, but it's not, that is not.
That's not how.
That's not how.
That's not how I see it.
Well, in my opinion, if the patron has a, has an issue with anything, they can we have a pretty open policy as far as talking to the board, so anyone can come in anytime and talk to us, I don't think really. As long as it was submitted in the allotted time, and of course, we would hear them take it into consideration, so.
Well, how else would one interpret if the committee does not reach a solution?
That's how I interpret it.
But at the same time, I still think it's really vague, and I don't think it gives guidance if I'm off the street and I ask to have this considered.
If I want to pull a book, and I see that, well, it doesn't look like that happens, actually. And, not that I wanna encourage people to file these forms and try to get books banned, because I really don't. But I also wanna be clear about what the policy is, and I don't think it's.
Right, and, and that's, that was my interpretation coming into last month's meeting, was that they had, if the, the only way that they, they, they could carry it on, that it would come before the board was if the three-person reconsideration committee could not agree on the book, then it would come to us, but then when, when we talked about it, had discussion last month, you brought it up that there was an option for, for people, if they didn't like the reconsideration committee's answer, that they could bring it to the board.
And that's how I interpret it, but reading it again.
Well, let me suggest some different language.
Sure, I, I think, I think we just need to revise.
That's, that's, how about if the committee does not resolve the matter to the patron's satisfaction, comma, the request for reconsideration will be forwarded to the president of the library Board of Trustees, or reconsider, for further consideration.
I got, that would be.
Do we need to save?
Well, we would submit this to Mike, and then he would, you were gonna bring it, this was, sorry, this is just, this is just how we would do this, right? We would rewrite this, and then we would approve it next board meeting, correct?
That's, that's what, unless you think you have enough guidance right here, but I would think.
I mean, if all my, if all I'm doing is inserting that, because I like that language, I, I think we could do it now, just.
Okay, if you feel comfortable.
So move.
Can I, can I have further discussion?
Uh, sure, yeah.
Okay. To me, the, the fact that we have the reconsideration committee is comprised of the director, the librarian who works under him, and a third member of the library employees. That's the reconsider, the reconsideration committee. I have, I have to take, I have to disagree with you, Greg, I, I don't, I don't think that 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 is necessarily the, the best way to reconsider a book. The, the person that ordered the book, and then a subordinate of that person have to review the book. I think that the reconsideration committee needs to be the Board of Trustees. I think it needs to, that's where we, we need to assess the book. Because it does, it, I'm step, I'm trying to step back since last month, and even before. And, and look at it from the, from the public's, from an outsider's view vantage point. And to me, it doesn't look good that that, that, that that's happening, that that's our reconsideration committee, are the people that own, or that, that decided to purchase the book, and an employee under, under them, or you know, speaking of the librarian that orders it, and I assume that that's the librarian that orders it, not you.
Correct.
Okay, that, that's what I thought, so that's why I'm not including in you and that in the subordinate to talk. to talk. But it, to me, it just doesn't look proper to the public.
I'll ask a question then. Is there anybody here other than Mike who has a degree and access to critical materials about, about the books on this board?
Reviews, any of that? I mean, yeah, I understand what you're saying is that, you know, this should be the final answer. But it is soon we have, and it is according to what we, what we've decided here. But I, I I have two years of an MLS done and I, and I don't have access to critical critical reviews of, of every book. But I don't, I don't feel like I have I don't feel like every decision about every book that comes in, that I have the purview to do that. I don't have the, the access to the materials necessary to make every decision.
I'm not talking about every book that, that comes in.
No, I'm just saying even the ones that come in here. We've asked these people to make decisions, people who, who have done critical have read critical reviews, who have access to those reviews, we're asking them to make those decisions before it comes to us.
And I do think that this is part of a bigger discussion and a bigger umbrella. I want to be respectful of everyone's time. And I know that we have obviously the
Well, and if Angela was, had some concerns about this, maybe making a decision on the fly in her absence isn't the way to do it.
And, and I find that, is that, is that a table?
I will withdraw my motion as to table this, but I do want to ask Joel a question because I'm, I'm trying to what you are suggesting then is instead of going through the administrative process where we would have staff try and resolve this issue independent of the board. And then if they can't resolve it to the patron's satisfaction, have the board hear it. What you're saying is do away with all that, just bring it all straight to the board. That's, is that because that's, I think that's disrespecting the patron's time or that you think it's, the process is meaningless because these people are going to all overstate what they've done before. I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, I truly want to, okay. Yes, I'm trying to rephrase it. I think you're trying to be diplomatic, but I'm just trying to
I'm trying to be diplomatic. And, but I, it doesn't make sense to me that someone is going to reverse what they have the book that they have ordered. And, and there are, there are many websites that do, that have book reviews. No, I don't have a degree in, in the, in that. And I don't believe any of us do. But we, we can use the same basis, the same tools that the librarians use to screen a book. And there are other options out there. There, there are more than one or two that they, that they use. There are others. And so we can get all perspectives of, of this book in question.
Yeah, I think we act as a government board, not operational board. And this, to me, is where we set a policy that go through our operations first. And I hear, I hear your, your concern and I think it's reasonable to make sure that on the committee that we have somebody outside that direction. So it's children's book, make sure we have an adult. Make sure that it's not all the same department that's coming to group thing. I do think that this is something in two years, we've had movies once come like that here and we're still alive and kicking. And so I want to make sure that we're not overflowing this entire issue based on perceived national direction and the way things are. The policy has for us. I, I've had no patrons directly or indirectly approach me and say that they are mad that and so I hesitate to go and blow up the, the bachelorship and the bachelorship.
It does. I've had, I've had patrons and citizens of, of the county approach me and say they will not come into the library and bring their children in here because books have been left on the shelf in question that for reconsideration and they've been left on the, on the shelf. And so they, they refuse to come in to the library and use the library on that basis.
And they have that absolute right. Well, they also have a right to come to the board.
Yes.
So why hasn't anybody? I, I think since I've been on the board and I've been on the board longest of anybody here, I think
Possibly combined, like all of us combined who have been here, just, just for
Thank you.
That is not a slight.
The old inference.
Many years.
But I think, I think I've seen one or two, I'm not sure. I think I've seen one or two that have come before the board with those requests. And so they're always able, and so please communicate to those folks if there was some ambiguity in their understanding of their right to basically an appeal of that decision.
Yes.
That they know that it's there. And that's one of the reasons I was proposing this change to make that real clear, so that it's a situation where if in fact this is a rubber stamp process and it's not, it's not a real true due review and we're not hearing any outside ideas and we want to involve the board in it, that they understand there's always somebody, they can always bring that back to the board. And I'm wondering if some of that was confusion, the people didn't understand. No offense, but the, the mic is not the final argument.
Well, in this
In my email back, communication back, I can double check by 99% sure that I say, if you have any more concerns or you're not happy, you're welcome to appeal.
So now a person is always welcome to take their ball and go home.
Yeah.
Okay. But to me, that's, would have a lot more meaning if they actually had been unsuccessful in their effort to have the book reconsidered, repositioned after both the staff and the trustees had said no. Now I can say, okay, well, I'm not going into that organization. The trustees and staff are all full of whatever. But what I can't understand is somebody not coming to the library when they still could have come before the trustees and said, I went there.
I also think it gives us another data point. We're about ready to enter executive session to great money. Our job is to great money.
Yeah.
And if, if we're getting people in front of the board that say Mike is not listening to us, that's how we grade Mike. And, and I think having that middle committee data, the committee keeps rubber stamping these books and we keep we keep trying to get them to reconsider and they're not reconsidering any of it. Are you into the board should we hear? Because that's how we grade them.
I would also like to advocate for staff. Everyone's had a chance to speak except for me. So that's we, these are, staff are obviously paid professionals. They're also the ones that interact with patrons day in, day out. No offense to us, but we all have our special Facebook groups and our preferred feed. The interwebs is really great about feeding us things that we like and keeping us in our happiest place. And I think sometimes that provides a great avenue to be exclusive, not inclusive. And staff, of course, are the ones that are interacting with the majority of the patrons day in, day out. I think, and I would like to hope that we have hired a staff that will take our patrons' thoughts and needs into consideration as they are assessing our collection. It's also what they are trained and paid to do. And why these trainings that we are approving for an over budget are so important because they're staying with national standards and trying to understand the current trends as far as what to put on our collection and maybe what to weed out.
I think the other part of what Spencer was saying, if we trust the decisions that Mike is making in deciding who is on these committees, of the committee for reconsideration, that's something that we look at as far as if we're not trusting the, trusting the decisions he's making to the people who he's having to make those decisions, then that should, you're into a sparrow.
I am going to, for the sake of time, because we haven't technically gotten to the executive director's report yet. So, and we're 40 minutes.
Table.
Um, yes, you have already moved.
And yes, and I have moved to table. And, but I will ask, Mike, would you please do me a favor and insert the language that I said so we could consider that at next, the next meeting as, as a possible discussion. So
Please move that. Do I need to get a second or do we need to vote on it?
I'll second.
Joel will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Perfect. Okay. We're going to table that for next session. We will, we'll talk about it in January and try to make sure that Chris and Angela are here. Moving on, on our jacket here, we have the director's report that we can We've been in and out of it already. We said five, but some of the things we've already covered. If you don't mind, Mike, skip over those.
So we have Indiana Library Federation had their annual conference in last month. We had several staff go to that. A lot of the sessions and making connections to people. So that's a big thing. Will there any questions about other reports from the department heads? It's right around Halloween. People have, every year they
And these were questions about department reports?
Yeah. And then Spencer was commenting that it's very impressive that Harry Potter is still prevalent. As a fellow
I did have a question. Was that, I did not interrupt or catch you. On page 18, Beth and Beck had been researching the state guidelines for our website for accessibility tools. They will be requiring changes to help patrons in 2025. We're trying to get ahead of the deadlines. And I hate to sound like the old guy. But what type of accessibility tools do we lack that we try to add?
I don't think we're, I don't think we are lacking anything. We're just ensuring that, that we are applying the new rules that were passed for accessibility for individuals that are blind or impaired in some way to make sure that we're meeting those. So I don't, I think we are on point.
Okay. I was wondering if there were any specific things and I understood that, I understood that you could maybe have paid reader and things like this.
Yeah, they do a really good job, even with colors and stuff. They, they take, all of our marketing goes to another website to make sure that we're meeting those contrast requirements and have the the
All text.
All text and stuff like that. Thank you.
He stumbled on my area of expertise. There you go. Yeah, maybe I should have just asked that answer.
So I think we're doing, I think we're, we're, we're ensuring that we are. And it's July.
Yeah, the longer the shorter. We can get very sued.
Yeah, so
We can get very sued.
We can't. We have very expensive lawsuits. So we should definitely follow.
And, and there are, you know, out there that that's what they do is they, they seek out websites and then sue.
Yeah, we, at a former job, we dealt with quite, they will just call and find sites that aren't. Basically, we'll go file lawsuits. We're trying to avoid it. I think we're, I mean, I assure you, we were in pretty good shape. Huge costs is probably just
All right. If that's everything on the director's report, does anyone have any further questions? Hearing none, let's go ahead and move on to claims. It's usually in the back of page 30 something.
The financials, I did have a couple of questions too.
Okay.
The unrestricted gift this month, 13,000, we have some bequests from estates or something like this or?
I saw that too.
Okay.
And, and I was kind of shocked. Usually you get those usually Linda hands me those. So I, I saw that in there this evening and I was viewing it. I was shocked by that addition. So I'm going
So you don't know for sure. Okay.
If, if, nothing large, but that'd be a lot of small ones.
Yes.
So I, I will, I will verify with Linda. Where that number?
The second question I had for you is have we now paid off our bond?
Yes, it was paid off in
What happens? What discretion? You know where I'm going with this, don't you?
Yeah.
What, what do we do with the laptops?
I believe it could be
Doesn't buy much of a car, but it's a pizza party.
Uh, I believe it would go back into our, you know, our chest. That's what Chris
Okay, and that makes sense.
Because that's where, that's where it came from, we just overpaid.
Someone wanting to make a motion.
Greg, done asking. I have a couple of questions.
Don't trust me.
I'm done.
On, on page number 656, page 30, we have a bypass fund. I don't know what that is. It's bypass, um, bypassing only $250.
So it's stuff that comes in and instantly goes out. So it sits in our account for a very little time. Usually that's like insurance. So for instance, the, the staff's hospital insurance, they come in and it goes right out. So it hits it and they go down. So it's just a bypass. I'm not sure what that, that one's referring to. I'd probably find out. But there's theoretically the corresponding income item to deal with that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Then we did $880 for real things. Did they do? Those are Windows. And seven, the other one was just the T-Mobile hotspots. We pay $7.60 for 22. And are those, are those still being heavily used if what they want to start?
They are.
And this is actually cheaper, right, than it used to be? Because that was one of the first things that you did when you were first on board. It was, you were like, hey, I found a cheaper rate for
Not only is it cheaper, but being T-Mobile, it's
Better.
Better exception, covered.
Yeah.
Coverage. We had, prior, we had, and I never knew this, so these other like Boost Mobile type things, they use the other towers. But if there's a Verizon customer and Boost Mobile, Boost Mobile doesn't get the service. They get it picked off. And that's what was happening. So people would get our hotspots, not be able to use it for a full week because there were other people. And so by being on a main carrier fee or ensuring that they are, have access to that.
Considering that hotspots or some other libraries will not do this.
Yeah. Yes.
I feel like I should be this much.
Is that a motion, Spencer?
Oh, sure. All motion to approve the claims.
Spencer motions. Can I get a second?
I agree with second.
Greg seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, approved. All right. This is the part of the meeting where we have time allotted for fellow comments. We have Leanne here to speak for us today. Leanne, I'm going to give you three minutes. You're allowed to stand or sit. You can come sit at the table if you'd like, whatever would make you most comfortable.
I don't know where I keep. Okay, I'll be back after. By the way, oh, thank you. Um, I was just going to add something. It'll take about three minutes. Just for the sake of consistency, I'm going to have a and we are going, or I'll set it for three minutes.
I have done that to people before.
So here's the thing. I'm gonna, it's gonna go really fast. I would say it more gently. If I try, but then I would, I would go over. So
I think on any normal board meeting I think on any normal board meeting, we would love to uh stay after the board meeting and obviously discuss with you. However, this is a special one because we have executive session after, we will be leaving this room and going elsewhere. Um, so uh if, if you want to circle back with any of the board members, or if any board members wish to circle back with you, we can open those lines of communication. Tonight would just be unusual.
Okay.
I'm gonna go ahead and start the timer whenever you're ready.
Okay, um, I was raised with a strict Christian faith. When I began kindergarten at five years old, I was taught to not celebrate Christmas, birthdays, Halloween, and Easter. There was no Christmas or birthday songs to be sung, no holiday arts and crafts to do, no exchange of gifts. My parents did not say to anyone that since Leanne does not celebrate Christmas, the whole class cannot. They parented me at the public school system. I visited the library and quickly found uh books with girls working on their witchcraft and special powers. There was mythical dragon, and one book's cover included a girl sitting in front of a book learning to cast spells. There's a whole section on mythology and a section on religion with the symbols for Christianity, Hinduism, Taoism, Sikhism, Islam, Buddhism, Shinto, and Judaism. And why? Because the book, as the book states, we're all one big fan, family. In the Christian, Christianity section, the children's bibles are actually, we're used to it, but they're actually graphic. And they, there's some that do, that have Delilah betraying Samson, Samson killing himself and everybody around him. And of course, the torture or death of Jesus. So I was wondering, why would people, they object to one subject that they say their god hates, then walk in accepting books with lying, betraying, child endangerment, suicide, murder? And since they are so faithful, so as to make a public stand, ought they not reject the magic of Elsa? The books with ghosts, vampires, spells, curses, and witches of Halloween, unicorns, magical snowmen? Why isn't they allowed their children to pick a book about Ariel, Aladdin, Elsa, the Lion King, Moana? That sorcery, ritual, magic, and special power? The religion I spoke of would not take their children to those movies or read these books. They parent their children in the way they see fit. They also use this library and watch what their children pick up to read. If the parents don't like it, they explain in an age-appropriate manner why their child should put the book back. That's what my parents did. This entire subject has gone down a rabbit hole that doesn't even apply in the public world. People objecting to L B G T Q but having no problem with magic and sorcery are choosing their topic. Their protests are going down this false path of piety. What it's about, in essence, is the lack of parenting. Their issues are, are their responsibility, not the library's. With each person that comes before you in objection to L B G T Q publications, they are sitting before you telling you that they cannot parent their children. They're asking you to do that. There is no cross on this building, it is for everyone. If these people cannot do this, then not only is this place, but everything outside of it too dangerous for them.
It is.
Oh, look at that.
We're so spot on, and thank you so much for your courage to come and speak to the board today. Um, we encourage any and all patrons to talk to us as we listen and hear you, and will always take um your words into consideration as we address policy. So thank you so much.
You're welcome. As a thought, um, with that book particularly, what a compromise could be is that is eighteen-year-old, eighteen-plus, like you can't, you have to go to a special store for that outfit. You could approach it that if they were polos and shorts, you would have no problem with it. Like, it's really hard, I, you guys have a hard job, you know?
Thank you.
So, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And like he said, you know, I don't know, I'm not a librarian and stuff.
Oh, yeah, I kicked over your water.
Well, I'm sorry.
All right.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we don't need a motion to return, but we are going to go to executive session. So everyone, please turn off your um mics and gather your things. We're going to go into Mike's office and we will settle the meeting concluded.